No, that's all.
Thank you for that.
Of course, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to start the work session. Welcome to the work session. In which we will talk about taxes and fees and other forms of income revenue, revenue for the town. And Philip is going to guide us as we go through this. It's all yours.
All right, well, good evening, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for spending a little bit of time with with me on this topic. Yes, if you remember from the previous finance work session. The board had indicated a desire to have a focused conversation on on taxes, but probably or our lower, I obviously took that was expanding across various revenue streams. Some which already apply to towns, some that don't yet or don't currently. So this is, we have a whole hour, we've plenty of time for discussion. If you want to have a question, we can pause and dive into a particular topic as we move along. Thank you to John Schuman for showing up, supporting the finance team. John is our deputy treasurer and HR manager, so thank you, John. All right, so what I put together, it's in the packet. Kind of high level here, I thought we'd start off with a few definitions. I'm not going to read each one of those, but there's there's a plethora of various taxes, fees. And such, so first few pages here are definitions and and kind of get us off to a start with that. I did include a few slides that I typically have shown for budget season overview of our funds. And I think I've had an opportunity to review it with almost everybody. That part of it, but again, a good reminder of town's fund structure and then how the revenue sources flow into those funds. Then I wanted to talk about just revenues and what our current revenues are, how much of our as a percentage, how much of those revenues make up our various funds? Last year as a kind of an odd year or unique year, I would say. And then good looking into 2025, we're shifting more towards what I would call a typical year for the town. So we'll take a look at that, talk about pros and cons and impacts from that. Then we get some. We get a few revenues from the states that we don't regularly talk about, so I included a description of those. And then I tried to come, I tried to think of, okay, what are questions I've heard or I've had? Or I guess what may be on your mind, so we'll go through some of those. And then again, anything that comes to mind, we can, we can dig into. So looking at the definitions, we'll start on page five of your packet there. Sales tax being the primary one for the town. That's our primary revenue source. And I just want to highlight, yeah, sorry if you all have been doing that. I wanted to, I underline a couple of words here, so sales tax. That's not paid by the businesses, that is collected by the businesses. So it's, it's the people that are purchasing goods and services that pay the sales tax. Our business community remits that sales tax to the state, which then comes back to the town. So I think it's important when we talk about sales tax. Who ultimately is paying that? It's, it's the consumer, it's our people that are paying for the goods and services. A use tax is something that is fairly common. It's not something that's in place for the town of BD or Shapewell County. And that is, that is a tax that acts to complement a sales tax. It usually only applies to motor vehicles and certain building materials. So this is a tool that allows some. You could think of it as a fairness or an equalizer. If, if somebody goes and purchases a vehicle outside of the county. If the town or the county or both have a use tax. That allows a collection of almost like a sales tax on that transaction. Without the use tax, someone could go to the front range, buy a vehicle and they would only be paying the state sales tax and the town and county don't get a compensation for that. We do, we have one major auto dealer down in Salida. So by contrast, if somebody purchases a vehicle and they live within the county or town where that, where that dealership is located, they do pay the sales tax. So you could think of it as slightly unfair to a local dealership. When they're trying to serve the local constituency. So we can talk more about sales tax, but again, that's not something that's in place by the town or the county currently.
So real quick, so it's like somebody buys a car in Nebraska and brings it back to Colorado, they pay a state use tax. Or is there something?
They pay registration fees when they register it in the county. But there's no collection of use tax that would go to the town or the county.
Nothing for this, I guess there's nothing then for the state either then.
I don't, there's some level of fees that go back to the state, but I don't think there's a state sales tax at that point. It would have to be purchased within, somewhere within the state.
Okay, gotcha.
So that 2.9% of the state.
There is no use tax, correct? You're just defining.
I'm defining use tax and making sure you know that we do not have.
Now, are you, are you planting a seed that maybe we should?
I'm not, I'm just letting you know what we currently have, I'm not going to advocate on anything, yeah.
It's nice to know that's.
Yes.
So I appreciate that.
A lot of places have use taxes.
Do we have any businesses that don't stay current on their sales tax remittances? And how would you know?
We do, and that does happen from time to time. How I know is monthly, I download all of our sales tax and I do look over our larger businesses in terms of amounts. It's, it takes a lot of data analysis to identify particular businesses, but it's happened. It's probably happened five times since I've been treasurer, that I've noticed a a business that hasn't remitted. We have a partnership with the Department of Revenue at the state level that I just reach out to, they're in charge of enforcement or compliance would be a better term, compliance in terms of sales tax. So the town never really takes an active role going, you know, okay, you're, you're falling behind here. But I do interact with the state, say, hey, I'm noticing something missing or there's a trend here, can you take a look at that? And they will, they've been very responsive to look into those. And oftentimes we will have a correction where they'll, you know, they'll collect or set up a payment plan with the business that if they have fallen behind, so it does happen. Do I catch everything? No way. No, no way. But the bigger ones, we do, because that's where we see a blip, right? If it's a larger one, we'll see, we'll notice it in our year to year comparisons.
Were you saying Poncha has a use tax?
On building materials. That's basically collected at time of building permit, so if somebody comes in with a building permit. It was a use tax passed in 2008, basically the town will collect 2%, which is the town sales tax base. Based on the valuation of the building divided by half, saying you're going to buy these materials. And so one, when you look at a building permit, you're getting tap fees, water fees, stuff like that. It does have an impact to the water account. As far as the general fund, there's not really a monetary allocation to the general fund at time of building permit, so this collects it upfront. And then they get a Texas zip certificate that if they go to a local lumberyard, so if they went out and lumbered, they would not have to pay this town sales tax. So indirectly it provides them a little bit. The, you know, a little bit more of an advantage to local lumberyards rather than just buying everything from home vehicle, so.
It's a conversation that I think could be had countywide, if it's something the boards understand at least more of a deeper discussion, because yeah, that's really, it's really building materials and motor vehicles.
Well, it seems like we used to see it on Amazon shipments, you know, things, things where you weren't paying any sales tax until that new, you know, the South Dakota case where now they all collect sales tax.
Yeah. You see that a lot more now. Okay, moving along, property tax, I think you all are familiar with our property taxes. This, this one does play into the town's revenue stream, we'll take a closer look at that later. The main thing I want to emphasize and explain tonight is how the Tabor does apply to the town's mill, mill, mill rate in the levy when it comes to property tax, so we are bound to a certain growth year on year, whereas our sales tax are not, so we'll come back to the table part of that. Any questions on property taxes? Any one of these could take up, you could dig into quite a bit, but I'm happy to. Okay, we'll keep going. Fees, so fees are set up by the town. The main thing about fees is they're, they're set up, established to defray the cost of the service. So you think about licensing fees or permit fees. Those are, those are established by the town to cover the cost typically of the people, time to provide the service to the, to the person paying the fee. So it's not, it's, it's different than a tax. It's not meant to be a tax and it's not meant to be a punishment or a fine or anything like that, it is strictly to cover the cost of providing the service. So in later on in the presentation, kind of talk about how we set up the fees and when we do that. But again, it's really important that we differentiate fees from taxes.
These have to, you're looking to offset, defray or meet a cost. You're, you're not doing a market survey to figure out, well, what can we, what can the market bear? We will charge what the market can bear.
Correct.
That is not what you do.
That is correct.
You can't do that, can you?
Not by definition, no.
Great, okay.
Impact fees, so this is, these are fees that are, that are tied to development. And this is probably something that could be discussed and kind of looking at what we have or don't have in terms of impact fees. But this is to to look at the ways that development impacts the existing community. When it comes to infrastructure, capital expenditures. And to say, hey, we, we have a calculation that says this development is going to impact streets in a certain way. And we have a basis for how much to charge the development to help the town offset that impact. The one that we do have, that's an example of that, is our system development fees on the water fund. So we have the tap fees or the system development fees, that's a infrastructure revenue that the town receives whenever somebody connects to the system. And we save up to help pay for future capital expenses on the water fund. Franchise fees, we recently updated this with Sangre de Cristo Electric, but these are fees set up typically with your electric gas utility providers that operate in the right of ways. So this is a way for the town to recoup some revenues to help with maintenance of the right of ways, improvements to the right of ways, ownership of the right of ways, the liability of those. And so every so often those come up for renewal, we negotiate and then we move forward with the utility provider. The customers are the ones that pay those franchise fees, so again, it's, it's not really the utility. They, they, they usually pass that on to the customer. So I know in the recent discussions with Sangre, we did have to take that into consideration. It's a, it's something that comes back to our community, the people paying those bills. So you don't want to make it out of line with what you think is affordable. Spain, special assessments, that is, that's when the town can make a decision to say, hey, we're going to put in a new piece of infrastructure or we're going to rehab that, but it's not something that we've been saving for, have a dedicated revenue stream for. So let's say a block is, is, has a dirt street. Town could say, hey, we're going to proactively go put in that infrastructure, that curb gutter street. It costs this much and we're going to allocate that to the people that live adjacent to that piece of infrastructure. The town recently did that, I say recently, a couple of years ago with an alleyway off of Main Street. The town hasn't built that yet, but it is set up to recoup those from the adjacent property owners. So that's called a special assessment. Okay, moving on. So again, Tabor wanted to highlight, you know, Tabor, something that's set up through the, at the state level, but applies to local governments. It's really just a mechanism to control the growth of revenue. Has nothing to do with our expenses, it's all about our revenue. So usually the definition of Tabor is keeping up with inflation, but no more than that, that's kind of the baseline. It applies differently to various things, but that's, that's the methodology typical with that. With calculating the Tabor. And if, if there's excess revenue and Tabor applies, then the government has to refund that to the taxpayers. So the state recently did that a year or two ago with their, with their excess revenues. The debroosing, the next term there is when the voters say, hey, we are going to approve the local government to keep excess revenues. And that can be worded and applied in different ways for the town. All of our revenues are debroosed, primarily applies, applies to sales tax. So any sales taxes that we receive in excess of what we budgeted, the town gets to keep that and that's, that goes to fund balance or the board allocates that to other, other expenditures. Our, our property tax again is not debroosed, so it is subject to Tabor. And so we calculate our property tax revenue each year and it is controlled or limited by, by inflation or CPI calculator, calculation. So while our, you know, what happened in the last year is people's valuations went way up. While the town only could collect about a 7% growth rate year on year. So our mill rate went down to get to a certain revenue amount. So it's something that will yeah, it's just something that applies to the town. So our sales, no matter how things are going in town, we will never be able to, kind of, we'll, we'll never be able to expand our property taxes beyond that inflation year on year rate. Does that make sense?
So, so if the skate park got knocked down and there was a $15 million hotel built there, that property value would go way up.
Yes.
You'd have to adjust the mill levy way down. For town as a whole, so if the property values really, really race up in town, we're limiting what we can collect. And so the mill levy has to offset.
Yes, your example, there's two parts of your example, there's the the construction of something that gets factored into allowing us to account for that. So when new, when we have new houses in town, for instance, vacant land gets built on. That grows our base, so that, that allows us to grow a little bit more. But just valuations of existing properties, yeah, you're right, that we're bound by that inflationary growth.
Question, as far as like, this year was a good example where appraised values went, you know, assessed values went so high up that Tabor was the levitation, so we had to back down to that 7%. Say this year, those appraised values and that overall number only goes up 3%, can we go back? And bump up to the 7%? See what I'm saying, if it's lower after it's been higher, it's almost like an unrealized gains.
I think it's a year on year growth, I think you're still limited to what, where, where we were last year. Was a, is a number that you then plug in and say, okay, that's the number, what's the inflation rate on top of that?
So it's just a one year look back, whatever last year was.
It is.
This is our, we're allowed this much growth.
Yep.
And we adjust the mill to make it there.
That's my 2008 though, hurt Colorado so bad, because we're like still recovering from that adjust back of that year.
So it's interesting because our, our max mill rate is in the nines. We're down in the fours now, because we've had to knock it down every year, so. It's an interesting discussion when you look countywide, because a lot of our county partners are not bound by the same, those same limitations. So people's property taxes, what they end up paying is just a hodgepodge. You know, town and county are limited, so theirs will go.
The county's, county's Tabor.
That's correct.
And so the other districts, like the fire district is not.
Fire is not, library is not.
Hospital.
Hospitals.
Same district.
I don't know about a hospital. And I don't know about.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Yeah, okay, so these next few slides, I won't spend a whole bunch of time, we can talk about this also during budget season. But again, especially our general fund is a combination of various revenue streams. And I, I do want to emphasize that, that the sales tax is the primary portion of our, of our revenues going into there. For now, just as a right before budget season starts. You, you see all the revenues in gray going down into the general fund. And then what we do is after we build our operating plan, we make sure that we have a little bit or enough or a balance of enough to then move over to the capital improvement fund. So our capital improvement fund for not water or airport, but general government is funded through the same funding sources that funnel through the general, actually the general fund. So we can get grants, we now have the marijuana special revenue that goes in there. And we have the conservation trust fund from Colorado Lottery. So we have a few other funnels going in there, but, but the faucet's not too big.
There's maybe a question for the mayor or Brian, do you know if we have representation at CML? Or if we've taken positions on property tax measures in the governor's office or things like that in the past?
I don't know whether we have taken positions.
Okay. Do you know, Brian?
Not since I've been on board. I know historically, we kind of brought it up for actually allocating liaisons to the different agencies, we board, CML is actually on there as far as is there a board member that wants to kind of be more involved at that state level? And it was kind of decided as far as just staff keep an eye on it at this point, but so right now we don't have any like active participants.
Maybe it's something we can reconsider going into the new year, I'd be happy to sit on the CML.
Okay.
Board, but like.
Jenkins might have done.
Okay. Holding a special session right now to consider like.
It's true.
Four.
Yeah.
Property tax cuts.
Yeah.
And it is really important to us because it's not a, it's not the majority, but it's an important piece of our funding stream. And because we're already so limited by Tabor, I wouldn't want the town to lose anymore.
Yeah.
Like there's other districts that can take a haircut, in my honest opinion.
Yeah.
Towns should not be first in line for that. And I don't think that most voters and people are aware of those dynamics and so, yeah.
I feel like CML, you know, and CML has always kind of had a bigger foot in the front range, obviously, because there's more people, so. It'd be good to get a voice in the mountains more.
Yeah, they have like a rural and small towns like committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like their major voices usually supporting.
Yeah.
Large municipalities and this, this state kind of continues down the land use.
Path as well, that'd be important.
That's true.
All right, next slide. Again, these are our smaller funds, just showing the half a percent town sales tax funds are street fund. Lottery funds are conservation trust fund and the town does have a special sales tax that we collect upstate, because it is a special sales tax that goes into that marijuana special revenue fund that funds capital projects only. And that's going well, I would say, that process of collecting and getting compliance is going well, because we have two, so.
Yeah, a lot easier than sales tax.
Yes, yeah, if we had to collect sales tax, that'd be a whole other ballgame.
Is it at the level we thought it would be?
It's exceeding revenue project, yeah, succeeding budget.
Yeah.
Does home rule have to collect their own sales tax?
They don't, so they can actually partner with the state for the state to collect theirs, just like a statutory town does. So that is still an option if, for home rule, they can still utilize the state and I highly recommend that if we ever did go home rule, that we would continue onward through the state. All right, our other funds, these are besides, so the water fund, airport fund, our enterprise funds. Those are, those are primarily through our fees and sales and grants. All right, so let's take a look at this I chart number one. It, it really what we're trying, what I wanted to show here is, so this is look at 2024. And you have the, our various funds across the top, the columns are our funds. And then each fund adds to 100%, so it's, it shows you by the various revenue sources on the left what the percentage is for that fund. So for this year, for example, in the general fund, 56% of our revenue was from sales tax. And then over on the far right is the grand total, so that, that's a statement across all of our funds. You will see that this year we received 32% of our, of our revenue from grants, which is awesome. That's huge, like that's a lot, we've no, I don't, I don't think we've probably ever seen that before. But a combination of our water, airport, housing, like it, it added up. Yes.
Just so I'm reading the graph right, so the first column is a year or a general fund, how the general fund is funded. And then across is the grand total is how much of our grand total revenue comes from the individual grant sales tax debt.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah, it's a little confusing, I wanted to show multiple things in this. So you'll see at the top there, our, our total revenues for all funds, well, it was a little over 23 million in 2024. Not a typical year, we had way more grants and debt than we typically see. So when I, when I say debt, that's getting refunds from our water loan for our water treatment plant project. So those are, those count as revenues when you receive them during the year. But even so, you can see where sales tax is in regards to the general fund. You'll see property tax there at 6.3% and 2.8% overall. So again, it, it's not the major contributor, but it's still important. And you kind of see, what's interesting is how how high investments are compared to, you know, like franchise fees, for example. So with our interest rates right now, the town is making more money off of what we have in investments. So that's, that's helped us as we've seen our sales taxes kind of flat and it's been nice to see a little higher return, but as we know, interest rates are going to start coming back down, probably. And, and we'll have to account for that in our budget, we won't. Next year, I still anticipate we'll have a healthy interest and, and return on our investments, but it'll start coming back down. Yeah.
So the grant percentage is an anomaly because of some grants for capital projects, but the fear more than the water treatment plant.
Correct.
And so when you say the property tax is 6.3%, if that grant, right now we're at 30%. I mean, if, if it were a normal year.
Property tax would occupy a bigger portion. Let's go to the next slide.
The property, property tax is not insignificant.
Is not insignificant. It's an ongoing revenue source that's very important, so when we don't, it is, is many grants or debt. This is, this is a draft that we will start loading in a little bit more grant revenue. That's not fully accounted for here, so I don't want to represent this is what 2025 budget looks like completely. But this is a better picture of what a, what it's, what a typical year looks like. So you can see sales tax and property taxes are a lot higher as a part, as a percentage.
The top, the top two.
The top three. Fees, fees come in at, in between there.
Yeah, so the sales tax and one property. Yeah, so the sales tax is one, property tax two.
Yes, and, and the two. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
So, so there are revenue, look, look at our revenue back down to about twelve million.
So on the previous chart, the two thousand twenty four, the reason debt is in there as a source of revenue is. The forgiveness of the debt, right, I mean, we went out and borrowed some money, but then they forgave one point nine million.
No.
No, that's not.
Like you, you take on debt to pay a contractor. That's income received, we, we received income by paying the debt, and then we spent it to pay the contractor.
That's considered revenue in that, yeah. So, yeah, so twenty twenty five, so again, really just emphasizing what sales tax does for our general fund, for our street fund. Um, which again, a lot of capital projects and operating come from that. And then uh fees, how that plays into, to our water fund. Um, yeah, I think that's all I wanted to hit on here. Okay, so quickly, I just wanted to highlight a few other revenues that we do get from the state, so the first one, the H U T F, highway users tax. This is mainly from fuel sales, uh, taxes and fees are on fuel sales from the state. Vehicle registration, things like that, but what we do is the town reports, I report uh to the state through DOLA. Here's how many miles of local roads we have. Uh, here's how much we spend on maintenance for plowing and police and things like that. And then they spit out a, a number that says, okay, your allocation is, and we run about a hun- one hundred thirty thousand a year. That goes into our general fund. Um, and it helps offset or covers the street maintenance part of the public works budget. So not the street fund, which is for capital projects, but the street maintenance operating, operating uh budget, so. That's a really important one, and we do anticipate that, anticipate that that will start. Coming down because of V Vs and alternate. Transportation options to people, so we won't be seeing as much fuel sales potentially. And the state is, from what I've read and heard, they hope to offset those losses. Via E V registration fees, I have no idea what that's going to look like, but that's, that's a statement from the state.
So they are, E Vs generally a heavier vehicle, which actually cause potentially more. Well, can cause more damage to a road because of the weight of the actual vehicle, so is that kind of interesting, you know? But, because the battery and such, it's.
On that, I went to the San Luis Valley T P R meeting with C dot last week, and they did speak about that.
Okay.
And Julie, who's the region five director, she said that their projections right now is it looks like it's being made whole.
Okay.
So their, their initial projections look like that the, the fees are offsetting the revenue.
Okay.
Loss from gasoline.
Okay, good.
From gas tax down, E D registration fees going up, she said their projections at this point in time look like they're breaking even.
That's good news, yeah, good, because that's, that's an important one, one hundred thirty thousand's a big deal for, for us, so. Uh, marijuana retail sales, so this is in addition to the town's special sales tax. So uh, the state collects fifteen percent on a retail sale. That gets remitted by the business to the state, then the state takes the, the total amount and takes ten percent of that. And returns it to the local jurisdiction. So we get a little revenue into our general fund through that. Uh, cigarette tax, I think pretty self-explanatory, that's been around for a while. Uh, but we still see revenue from that, and then lottery proceeds, again, funds our conservation trust fund. C T F, uh, which, which our rec and parks team have done a. Pretty fantastic job in recent years utilizing those dollars and stretching them into capital maintenance projects. Um, but again, that's limited, it's, it's focused on open space, public uh recreational purposes, so.
So how do they decide what share we get of the lottery proceeds?
It's a good question, Brian, you know that? Population, okay, yeah, they don't, they don't give you a, here's an explanation, it's, here's your deposit. I've never, it's, it's population based, that seems logical, yeah. It's why it's important to keep the state demographer happy. Happy, yeah. Keep bumping our numbers up. All right, let's go to the next one. So jumping a little bit, or, or actually diving in a little bit deeper to our, our sales tax rate. Uh, want to make sure we all understand what our town's sales tax rate is and how it's, what it's made up of, so the top. Top portion there shows on, on uh everything except for short term, our short term lodging. Uh, it's eight point one five, which is the state two point nine, the county two point seven five, the town two point five. And then for all short term lodging, so that's hotels, motels, short term rentals. Yeah, um, there's that additional one point nine county lodging tax. That brings that tax rate up to ten point zero five. Um, so again, that, that county, county lodging one point nine, that goes to the visitors bureau. And with the recent voter approval, now the county commissioners have some ability to. Utilize a portion of that towards housing, childcare, recreation. Enhancing the visitor's experience. Sure. Um, so there is at least a little bit more flexibility in Shafie County uh towards that, but. Um, visitors bureau is the, the main recipient of those funds. Um.
That doesn't include short term rentals, that is nothing.
It does.
It does.
It absolutely does, yes.
So we can't tax our own short term rentals because we're not home rule?
Uh, that is one of the, yeah, uh, co- common questions.
Oh.
So we can jump into that now, or we can get to it.
It doesn't matter, what can we, or whatever.
Let's, let's, let's pause, we'll pin it out, and we'll come right back to it. Um, wrapping up this slide real quick, so what I, what I show here is just, okay, so where does B V's? Eight point one five percent stack up compared to other municipalities across Colorado, so. I tried to make this easy to, but to follow, but it is, it probably isn't, so. Uh, one to two hundred and eighty eight, one being the lowest tax rate. Um, which is two point nine, which is a, a very small, very small place that only collects state tax, basically, they don't have a local. Tax all the way to eleven point two percent, which is Winter Park. That, that being two hundred and eighty eighth in the list. Currently B V's one ninety two, or at the sixty seventh percentile. Uh, knowing that there's going to be a ballot question. Uh, from the C H A for the point five percent, if that were to pass. That bumps B V up to eight point six five. It puts us at two thirty out of two eighty eight, or eighty per eightieth percentile. I share that just because sales tax is our primary lever. For uh future, you know, additions to. You know, town, town operations or, or services. Um, it, it, as that, as that increases, it reduces the town's ability. In all likelihood to add anything in the future, so if you go, if you. If you get to that eightieth percentile, I think it's worthwhile discussion to say, hey. You know, future, future town considering adding something, um, you know, a new rec. Facility or something that needs a dedicated revenue stream, sales tax is going to be more of a challenge to pass.
We can, uh, we can use different levers, right, like a mill levy, a property tax increase, do you have a sense of like? Where we are? In that three hundred municipalities range in terms of sales tax versus property tax? Like I see that, like, the overall tax rate is, we're in the sixty seven, seventy of the percentile.
Mm-hmm.
But in terms of like, is it because we're relying more on our sales tax? That other people are, are the people increasing their property taxes faster than we are, do you know what I mean?
I do, I don't, I don't know where we stand in terms of property tax.
Okay.
I will say that our property tax is fairly high in B V specifically. Because our school has a much higher mill levy compared to a lot of other schools because of the bond issue that was passed in twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, so like compared to Salida, B V's higher because of our school district.
Okay.
Uh, so utilizing or going after property tax, it would be the same challenge that the C H A's been going through. Uh, so, but yeah, I, I, I don't know how we compare to the states.
Okay.
You know, when, when people have questions about property tax and they think. It's town doing all this stuff, and I think the county goes to the same thing, like goes to county, you know? But then when you boil it down, it's a lot of these other districts where it's actually compiled, but a lot of people don't understand.
Mm-hmm.
That they're separate, they just see the one number, and they assume that the jurisdiction is in charge of it, and it's. You know, all their fault things are, you know, but it's, like you're saying, it's actually just one small piece of the overall.
Right.
Tax number, so sometimes I feel like the jurisdictions get dragged through the mud for those high numbers, but it's like. It's not necessarily us doing it, you know?
Keep mine in my office just to show the full breakdown, see, see the city, it's a very small part.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're definitely higher than the city of Salidas, if they do not actually have a property tax.
Yeah.
Um, they're completely sales track, they're sales tax driven. Um, it always seems to be when the discussions. You know, start of property tax versus sales tax, sales tax always is kind of the front runner, just because you can capture some of the visitors. Uh, revenue or revenue from visitors and.
But then, it's higher, you think, probably, if I just drive two more miles outside of town, like, you know. Chris is buying big old tires in Salida, they're just outside of town, like, I'd rather buy my tires there. You know, and so there's that perception that when it goes up, you're, you're, you're catching sales tax on candy bars at the gas station, but when someone buys. Thousand dollars in tires, they go out of town, so that's a.
True.
Yeah, trade off there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, uh, let's move on, common questions I put in here. Um, can the town establish a new local sales tax or use tax by ordinance? Well, yes, but got to follow a lot of provisions, so Jeff and legal team would, would guide the town on how to word it. Um, how to put the deep, deep bruising language, if that's a desire, um, all of those things would be integrated. Uh, but any new tax or increase of tax has to be passed by our voters, so it has to go to an election. Uh, recent example of that in twenty twenty, the voters, uh, B V approved the retail marijuana. Also approving that special revenue uh at that time, so we have a recent example of a new tax. Uh, approved by the voters. Can the town set fees for any reason and any amount? No, so remember fees offset, um, so we have to be. We have to, we have to go through a process of looking at what it costs to provide the service. And, and that's really what we should be following when we set up our fee schedule. Uh, we do that, I don't remember if I have that later on, but we. We do our fee schedule during the budget, uh, budget cycle, the staff looks through the whole fee schedule. Kind of looks at where our costs have gone up or where things have changed. Making sure that we're charging an appropriate amount, again, not overcharging, because a lot of times we're providing. A service that we want to be affordable to the community, that you think about like recreation programs. Facility rentals, but we also want to make sure that we're not overly subsidizing either, and we're collecting an appropriate fee, so. Um. Yep, so, but the, but the board has the authority through, through uh, through our local code and the state to establish fee schedule.
I have a question about that, that I was thinking about, is it possible to raise the fees by? Giving the, the people who. Do the tasks that are as uh the cost of the service by giving them a raise. Giving them more money, which would in turn raise the fee.
Yes, in a, so what you're saying, and, and, and then in that way would help pay for their.
Yes.
Rates. So I, I, yeah, the short answer is yes, if we, if we determine, hey, to. To properly provide the service and to retain an employee, we have to pay a certain amount, and that needs to go up. Is that kind of the example you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about staff retention and.
Yep.
And uh, you know, make sure people are getting paid enough, and if there's a way to do that by. Raising their salary, but also raising fees, so it's not becoming a burden on town. I don't know, this is an idea.
No, absolutely, and those, those two things should be tied, if not completely directly. Uh, at least through the budget cycle where. Your leadership team is looking at our pay plan, looking at where people are paid, comparing that to. Other places, going through the pay plan analysis, and then proposing how we fit increases into the budget to. Try our best to retain.
Right.
But still stay within a budget, then the fee schedule should align with where that kind of shakes out. So it should tie.
So it's something you already kind of considered as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing would be like, hey, if we built a new building. And we provide that as a service or, 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 you know, where people can rent, the cost of operating that ends up.
Right.
And that would be another example of, yeah, the fees would need to reflect that as well.
Yeah, for our big.
We get on our, on our, the water rates, we, we've keyed those now, every year they adjust based on the C P I. Falling behind on those water rates or those fees. Are there other fee schedules we might want to consider tying that to it? Cola or a C P I, like, they haven't talked about, like, your cost of living increases for salaries got to come from somewhere. Is there a place where we would consider some of those fees should just automatically adjust based on the year C P I?
Potentially, yeah, certainly, yeah.
Then you're not, then you're not setting, and you're, you're not having a big hoopla, we're setting a new fee, we're just, we're just trying not to fall further behind.
Right, yeah.
Fees are all going up, everyone's getting a raise, you know?
Yep.
Because it's, and. Costing more for the service.
Yep, absolutely, all right, let me keep moving here, I mentioned we don't run out of time. Can the town impose a lodging tax and?
You know, she's.
I'll come back to that one, all right, how are impact fees different for fees? Um, and taxes, so again, impact fees are looked at in terms of new development, so. Uh, considering uh the various ways new develop can, can benefit, I think we have a lot of those discussions, but. Also the discussions of, okay, what, what impacts to infrastructure. Uh, come to mind, and so I, I provided a few examples, so water tap fees is, is the one we have. But there's transportation fees, park fees, fire and police fees, impacted streets. School impact fee, so um. So they're, they're common, probably more common these days. Uh, maybe something the board wants to consider looking into a little bit more, but. There has to be, again, there, there needs, there should be a basis for this, so it shouldn't just be like, hey, Philip thinks that. Development should pay, you know, a hundred thousand for, you know, for a street, um, offsite street, there's. A uh, a process you go through, you pay a consultant to come in and then say, hey, we want to think about impact fee on. Streets, okay, then they would come in, provide some data. And make recommendations off of data what those impact fees should be, so. Yet not something that we would just wave a wand and make up, we would have to go through that exercise. Um, all right, let's get to the, can town impose a lodging tax on our short term rentals? The, the definition of lodging tax, uh, the answer is no, so statutory municipality. Um, as, as in B V cannot enact a lodging tax like our county lodging tax. Like a percentage of the sale per night, so the town cannot do that. The town can levy occupation tax, um, and so that was what the town looked at in twenty eighteen. When we looked at the occupation tax on short term lodging. Uh, the goofiness about an occupation tax is it has to be a flat fee, so.
Like an occupancy tax, like, so it's maybe ten dollars per person per night at the.
Ten, ten dollars per room, ten dollars per the whole thing. Um, but it's a ten dollars, and so whether you're renting out a hotel room or a whole house or something, it's ten dollars.
So if it's three hundred dollars a night or twenty dollars a night, it's ten dollars.
And it would have to apply to all lodging, or could we do it on just a short term rental?
So, um, I think that's probably further discussion with Jeff, but. But I would say what we looked at in twenty eighteen was a very, was a different rate for short term rentals. Versus hotels, motels, and so I think the answer is, yes, you could say this applies to this type. Of, of short term lodging uh versus another, but.
And that would be a referred measure to the ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, it did not pass in twenty eighteen, so that is, that is an option that the town has now. The, the other option, you know, home rule munis- The, the other option, you know, home rule municipalities can impose special sales taxes that could, could be a lodging tax, uh, type structure, but, uh, that's a different process. So, uh, let's see, and talked about establishing fees and can the town borrow, uh, to take on debt? So the answer is it depends. Uh, with our enterprise funds, our water and airport, we can, we can take on debt. That doesn't require voter approval. Um, we just have to obviously demonstrate that we can pay off the debt. So our water fund is where we've typically taken on, uh, low interest loans to pay for infrastructure. They look at our rate schedule, our revenue projections, making sure that we, uh, have a rate schedule that is uh, covering our costs plus what it would cost to pay off the loan. We make everybody happy. They won't miss the money. So those enterprise funds have flexibility.
When they have the status.
When they have the status. So that's, that's the note in there that talks about taking on a certain amount of grant funding. So think of our, our airport, we receive a lot of FAA grants. Uh, or with our water, uh, our water fund, we received a lot of loan forgiveness and grant funding for that. So in a given year, if you accept greater than 10% of your annual revenue in grants, you lose your enterprise status for, for one year. Um, and so you have to be pretty strategic in your planning when you combine grants with when you want to take on debt, because you need that enterprise status uh, to, to go obtain those, those loans without voter approval, essentially. So we did a little dance with the water fund to make sure that we didn't impact the ability to get a loan. We'll have enterprise status back. Um, you know, next year, I think it's off this year. So we'll be back to being able to take on a new water loan.
So if you, if you lose enterprise at its turn of the time, lost that, that means your income is too heavily dependent upon grants.
Correct.
Which means.
Not a business.
Which, which, which means you cannot take on debt without voter approval.
Correct.
Okay.
You can have your existing debt, no problem.
But no new debt.
No new debt when you've lost that.
And so enterprise that was basically, your defenses offset revenues. Meaning that the water, like, the sales tax can fall off, we, we can go off the cliff, but the way structure, so for the water fund will still provide water at the tap, because our fees cover our expenses.
Yep.
Correct.
Uh, general fund, uh, we cannot just go take on debt. Uh, so traditionally debt through bonds or just going and taking a loan uh, for, uh, just getting a loan, uh, that requires voter approval. So the most recent example of that was in 2012, our voters approved a street bond issue uh, to pay for the street improvements, uh, for three million dollars. And, um, again, it wasn't increasing taxes, but it was voter approval to take on that debt through the general fund, street fund structure. Uh, but there are ways to go about taking on debt without voter approval. And we've looked at that with the certificates of participation or at least purchase, uh, option, which is what we did with our, with our police station, which you know, essentially has wording that in, in a given year, the town can back out of that if the, if the, uh, board doesn't, um, resources to it, the town can back out of that. So it doesn't actually bind the town uh, for the full loan. And so the, the town is able to take on that kind of structure. So it's a powerful tool. We did it. It worked great with the police station. The county has done it with their EMS building here in the county. And, uh, the Slida has done it with their fire station.
So for, if you had to get voter approval to take on debt and it passed, and let's say, I don't know, things aren't going well because of the voter approval for taking that debt, does that allow the town to implement another strategy with all voters to make sure to recoup that? So I don't know what that would be, but you can put the hammer down harder than I guess you ever normally would type thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Uh, again, it's, it's all about a showing, can you, can you pay off that? That debt. So, so with the funding for our police station project, our, our existing sales tax and operating ca, uh, budget demonstrated that we could afford that repayment over 15 years out of our existing budget versus going and asking for a new tax.
Right.
But typically that's what you have to do. You have to say, what is that revenue source to pay for this new thing? Uh, but in the case of that, we were able to arrange that without a, without a new tax. Um, okay, final thoughts. Uh, when in doubt, ask legal. No doubt, ask legal again. Um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot of tools and things at the towns. Um, you know, the, the ability to use and, um, but it is really important that if we start exploring something, we obviously and you all would want to involve Jeff every step of the way to make sure we're following all the proper steps. And, um, I referenced, I sent in a PDF, but the CML municipal taxes and fees, probably one of the best publications they've ever put together. Um, it's so comprehensive on all these things. Like, I haven't found another one source to go look up definitions and how you can and can't apply taxes and fees and things like that. So your staff looks at that. You don't have to memorize it, but it's a good resource if you're ever curious about like occupation taxes and things like that. That's all in there.
Have you told them that? Cause I bet some junior staffer wrote it and now they're like an executive somewhere.
Yeah, it's, it was really well done, uh, very comprehensive.
Thanks, Lord.
Questions, me, Phil?
Very good slides. It's great.
Yeah.
You weren't fair. If you could fill in an hour.
I did.
We hope.
Great. Let's take a five minute break. Resume at seven o'clock.
Can we get you a gavel, ma'am?
I don't have a gavel tonight.
Oh, no!
No.
Oh, we have one. Let's go get you one. Hold on, hold on.
Unholy crowd that we have here.
Yeah. Hey, Max. Don't forget to get.
Last one's young.
There you go. There we go.
Okay. Uh, welcome. Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, welcome to the meeting of the board trustees for the town of Bena Vista, Colorado. It is August 27th, 2024, and the time is 7:03 PM. Um, please silence your cell phones if you have them with you. And, um, Brian, would you call, uh, the role, please?
Lady Fay.
Here.
Lady Hyde.
Here.
Neil LaCretzi.
Here.
Andrew Rice.
Present.
Speaker Rosenauer.
Here.
Devin Rowe.
I'm here.
And Cindy Swisher.
Here.
Thank you. Um, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustees, you have before you, um, proposed agenda. Um, does anyone have any changes to be made in the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So.
So we have, uh, LaCretzi and Rice. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Uh, okay, the agenda is adopted. We also have the consent agenda, which includes, uh, the minutes of our last meeting as well as, uh, minutes from the trails advisory board and the beautification advisory board. And reports from the town administrator, the town treasurer, uh, the recreation director and the airport manager. Um, does anybody have any items that they feel should be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately? Okay, hearing none, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second. Okay, so we have Swisher and Rosenauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One opposed? Okay, the motion passes and the consent agenda is adopted. Um, now we're at the part of our meeting, uh, where we take comments from the public. Um, we keep a clipboard on the front counter on which you can sign in and tell us what you want to talk about.
I'll bring it all the way up to show that nobody's on it.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay, no one has signed in, so, um, there won't be any public comment tonight. So we are, uh, ready to hear from the Places to Age group. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, we have Cheryl Brown Cavaca and Dee Dubin. Cheryl, uh, welcome to Bena Vista. Um, and, uh, I guess we don't really need Cheryl's uh, name and address since she's not public comment here, part of the program.
Hey, well, we really appreciate this opportunity to, um, address all of the trustees and thank you, Mayor, for having us. We appreciate that.
Okay, that's good to have you.
I think most of you probably know a little bit about us. Uh, our short term goal is to bring assisted living and memory care to Champaign County. And our long term goal is to have a whole continuum of services for those who are aging in our county. Um, so, um, it's so hard to see. Trying to make you run the same flip. So, um, oh, thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. Uh, so basically, this is a really grassroots movement. Um, eight of us got together and formed a nonprofit. Um, many of us had been on some sort of a committee previously uh, that had worked in this area. And, um, I think you might recognize some of the names on our board. Uh, Andy Bruno, Andy Dubin, who's here with me, they are, are, are co-chairs of our Places to Age Board. Um, I'm addressing you because I'm in charge of partnerships for, for the group. And I also wanted to point out that Jeff Eaton is on our board because he is our representative from the northern part of the county here. Uh, Jeff's, uh, only lived in the county for a couple of years. But he came from back east where he served in a couple of different locations. Um, with, as a director of a housing authority. So he has a lot of housing experience that he's kind of reapplying to our situation here. Um, I wanted to talk a bit about, uh, why, um, we took this on. Um, it really is a, a labor of love for something that we think is common good for the county. Um, it is definitely a county need. And, um, I think we have great public support, great public sentiment behind us because everyone acknowledges that need. Um, I've lived here just about 20 years. And in the time that I've been here, I think that I have seen a number of different attempts to do this. The, the hospital has tried, uh, public health has tried, the hospital and public health together have tried. And then there have been some private developers. And at one point out in Pontius Springs, there was actually a sign on the ground there saying that this was coming, but it never came. And, um, so I think we are a little bit unique because I think we're the first time that a nonprofit has attempted this. And there are some advantages and some disadvantages to that. Um, one advantage as a nonprofit is we can partner with other nonprofits and local governments and governmental agencies and that kind of thing. Um, we can apply for grants, uh, not all. Um, we can apply for grants. Uh, not all state and federal grants are open to us, but some are, uh, and certainly foundation grants. And so uh, and we can certainly do fundraising in the community. So those are things that we can do that are to our advantage. Our disadvantage is a developer would have a lot of investors, you know, and would have that solid money behind them, and we don't have that. And so one of the ways that that impacts us is, you know, we're trying really, really hard to know what's coming up, to budget for that, to plan on it, but if something unexpected comes up, we need flexibility in terms of timing. That's that's our big thing because um we might have to grant, write a grant, or do a fundraising project or something like that to be able to move forward when we hit something that is not anticipated. So um next, I just wanted to kind of review a continuum of care. I think you're all probably familiar with this. Even though the continuum of care really starts with independent living, we are not starting with that as our priority. Our priorities are assisted living and memory care. And the reason that we started there is because all of us have friends that have had to leave this community when they reached a point where they or their partner needed this kind of assistance because there was nothing here. They had to move away. Sometimes they left family. Almost always, they um, they left a support system of friends and so on, and um, and they also left a place that I think is very close to them. Um, I think the people that live in our county live here for a special reason, and they have a real sense of place. And so I think that has really impacted it well. And of course, hospice is also a part of all of this continuum and can enter at any one of these stages with someone. So uh, updates, um, so there are several things that we are really excited about right now that um have sort of changed since we started out, and we've been operating about a year and a half uh doing this. So um, we started out as a nonprofit under the Chafie County Community Foundation. And uh, you know, that was a great place for us to start. Uh, Betsy is wonderful. We got a lot of really good advice, and we still, at this point in time, um have a relationship with them. But we are now our own independent nonprofit, which actually is an advantage to us in terms of certain grants uh that we apply for. Um, and I do want to acknowledge that Patty Arthur helped us uh do all the paperwork and go through everything with that, donated her time to do that. And while I'm thanking people who have donated, I also want to uh very much thank um Bob Brether, um, who has done a lot of the architectural work and really helped us as we studied different models and kind of got an idea of what we wanted to do to really get that down on something concrete and do sort of a site plan uh to get us going. Um, so the other thing, of course, is that we have been offered donated property, and that's kind of one thing that really got us going. And a very big thank to, thank you to Jim Treat. Um, last Tuesday, our annexation of, he has um actually a forty-eight acre piece of property uh in between one-twenty and one-forty, and I'm going to show you on a map some pictures of that. Um, and he is donating ten acres of that to us. And of course, that's all not built, buildable, no, that's the right term to use because there's, you know, roads and ditches and drainage and all that kind of stuff. Um, the other thing that I think we have done a really great job of in the last year and a half as we've been working on this, is we researched all kinds of models. How many of you have had a a parent or a relative in independent living or assisted living or nursing care or so? And, you know, I have two, and my mother was in Denver down on the Front Range, and I think the sort of traditional kind of method to do that is, I know, you know, my mom was in a couple of independent livings that had eighty to a hundred units, and then she was in an assisted living that had sixty units in it. You know, they're usually nice apartments opening onto a hallway and then, you know, a common dining room and and area for exercise and meet people presenting music and all that. But as we started researching this, we came across all kinds of models. People are getting really creative with this, and we picked a model that is sort of a little spin-off of something that's called a greenhouse model, and it is smaller home-like units that hold fourteen to sixteen clients in it, and I'm going to talk more about that, but that is the model that we have selected and have been working on right now. Um, in this next year, we're going to really find out if it's financially feasible for us to go in that direction. But there are all these other models. They're aging in place models. Uh, we came across a really neat model called uh cozy homes where uh people that are in that middle income range um buy a modular home, and they're clustered together, uh usually some kind of a central building, and it's built on a community idea where people help each other out. I may not drive, but my neighbor may drive. And so you, they help that in, and then they pool money to get a care agency to work with them for medical. So so there's all kinds of models out there, and we are very much hoping that some of that other acreage around us, um, some of these other models may pop up. Yeah, and that would be really neat. So we have that. Okay. Put this across here. So this is uh Bob Brether did this kind of site plan for us. Is it okay if I come over and point out a few things?
Yeah.
To you?
Hmm.
Because that would be really neat to be able to do that. So, so what we are looking at here is a cluster of these home-like models. So this is our cluster, and by the way, everything in green here is the property that we have. So we don't own this property. We don't own this property, and then all of surrounding property we we do not have. Um, this is two acres that we are giving to the city of Salida for open space, and it will be a park area. And Jim Treat is also giving some, and so we're going to have a four to five acre park over here uh with that. So um in our model here, these four units are um assisted living units, and then this one over here is a memory care unit. And um, and these are even staffed differently. And this one shows you more sort of um, these little things in here are like the little apartments, and they're they're kind of like larger studio apartments. Um, but they all, instead of opening onto a hallway, they open onto a community area. So the idea is for people to become a community, and, you know, they can play cards and watch T V and chat with their friends, and and they eat meals together out in that area. And the staff are trained to do everything, rather than having some staff that just cook meals. It's like if my mom was living with me, I would do everything. I would entertain her. You know, I would cook, I would clean, maybe we would cook together. And these are set up that if someone wants to cook, they can. Or if someone is really into gardening, they could, you know, have a little garden area out here. So it's it's more like a home kind of environment. And then this one here is the memory care. Um, there's a lot of outdoor space for here for people, but in the memory care, they have a little kind of courtyard here for their outdoor because a little more security is required there. There's also two dining rooms here, one for um the memory care patients, and there's probably more like eight to ten of them uh in this building. Um, and then the second dining room um is for people that are up here in these independent one and two-bedroom units here that maybe don't want to fix all their meals. You know, maybe for breakfast they'll have some cereal, but they want to come over for lunch and dinner and be in the dining room together. Um, these buildings over here, uh, we are planning for employee workforce housing. I think you all probably know that it's really hard to get people to be caregivers, and we need to have lots of incentives for them, and being able to provide affordable housing for them is a a big deal uh in order to get people in there. Um, and it may also be housing for hospital workers or our first responders or things like that, too. So we've got a lot to work out yet, but that's, that's the basic plan. And then if you would go to the next slide.
I absolutely do.
Great. Um, so this is a map of Salida, and, you know, we ended up starting this in Salida because we have land given to us in Salida, but we're very fortunate that the land is close to the hospital. It's about a mile and a half away from the hospital. So um, this is uh County Road one-twenty here, and then this is County Road one-forty going out. So this is the intersection of Holland and those two county roads. Um, and over here, there's a Mormon church, and then there's the Angelview subdivision. And on this side over here is the Meadowlark subdivision. Um, the entrance to our place would be here from one-twenty, and this red circle is approximately the ten acres uh that we are going to be working with, and the part in blue here is is the rest of that property. So that's, that's where it's located. That's always the fun part, I think, to look at that and kind of see what what the possibilities are there. So, and like I said, that land around us, we are um really hoping, and Jim Treat has expressed support for this, and, you know, we don't know who's going to end up buying that other property and developing it. But, I mean, we are hoping that some of it will go to services for the people that are there, maybe, you know, a a small theater, coffee shops, um, and and then maybe other kinds of um independent living units or, you know, assisted living. There may be some fancy ones, some different models. There could be all kinds of things there, and that would be neat. But, and I know some people are interested in seeing um some affordable housing going in there, and it would be neat to have sort of a whole multi-age community and daycare center. But who knows what the future holds with that? We'll see. Um, another thing that we've done during the year is think a lot about operators. So operators are people like um Good Samaritan is a pretty famous one that, you know, if you're down in Denver, or I think Workday doesn't have another big one that's, oh yeah, yeah, that's down in Denver, and and they operate and manage these facilities. Traditionally, those operators bought into the facilities themselves and would own like twenty-five to forty percent of those facilities. Then COVID came, and all of these operators lost phenomenal amounts of money during COVID. You know, if they had a nursing care with two people in a bed, they couldn't have two people in the same room anymore. And people couldn't come down to dining rooms. They had to take food up to them. And of course, the 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 caregivers got sick, and, you know, it was just a really difficult time for them, and they, the state did not allow them to bring any new people, new residents in. And so operators are no longer investing right now, but they're still willing to manage a place. You know, do the, hire the staff, train them, all that kind of thing. And we have uh good, some brand-new good news there. Um, you know, we are on an incredibly high learning curve. We're learning about being a developer. We're learning about all of these uh healthcare issues and state regulations for all these things to get built. So we have just, we got a great grant uh with NICS fifty, and we are using that money to hire two, two groups. Um, we are hiring Live Well, which is a branch under the umbrella of Vivage, which, who is one of these big operators in Colorado. And we are hiring them to advise us. You know, we don't want to do something wrong and waste money. We know there's a lot we don't know about, things that we should maybe be thinking about that we haven't even thought about. And so they are coming on board with us. We are in the process of finalizing a contract with them right now. The other thing we have to do is hire an industry architect. Um, you know, down the road here, we're going to have to get loans, you know, for construction in this building, and um one of the big possibilities for that, not the only one, is a USDA loan. And we've been working with Kevin McCain, who operates USDA for the state of Colorado, and he has taken us through every single step along the way. And if we don't do all of these things right in the beginning, then we can't even make an application to USDA for a loan. And so that is one of the things that we have to do, and it's a pretty standard thing. Um, I don't think we would get funding from maybe other sources without doing that, without having an industry architect to work with. So uh, we are moving along on both of those. Another thing that I want to mention to you that's that's sort of pertinent here is it has become an issue in the state to have Medicaid units in a, say, something like assisted living, because, you know, people pay one fee a month, and it covers their housing, their food, and their medical care, their basic medical care. And so it got to be a big issue in the state of what agency pays what, and it was impacting the financial viability of some of the assisted living places. So they're in big meetings right now, um, DOLA, housing offices, health offices. I I don't know all the agencies, but it's a big group. And that is being chaired by Fallon Miller, who is with DOLA Housing. And um, and we are also working with her closely, and she's going to keep us abreast of what happens with that because that will also help us in our planning and our funding. Um, so that's uh one of the challenges that we have. Um, well, and the other challenge, one other challenge I mentioned to you was when we get a bump in the road, something that we weren't anticipating. And the other thing is just getting through this pre-construction stage. You know, there aren't a lot of grants out there we can even apply for that gives a nonprofit like us funding to get through this stage, and of course, we got put in infrastructure, too. You know, we kind of know what to do once we get to the construction part, but it's this getting ready for it. It's really proving to be a challenge for us. So we're trying to be as creative as we can with that. Um, so um, we are in a unique position as a nonprofit. Um, these are some things that I want to talk about um as we go through here. Partnerships are critical to us. Without partnerships, we are not going to make it. Um, and um, I I want to explain some things here, but first, I probably didn't put these in the order. I should have, but first, I want to look, talk a little bit about an M O U. We just finalized a formal memorandum of understanding of support with the city of Salida. And we went to them and asked for this because we have to work with them through this whole pre-construction and construction stage. And we were finding that, you know, our expectations and what we thought was going to happen, we, we're not developers. We don't know. And we were finding surprises. And so we have worked with them on an M O U, and we're very, very pleased about that, and we are going to use that as our model as we work forward. It's very helpful to lay out in paper and have down what each partner is going to give to the project, what each partner's responsibilities are. Um, so in the, some of the major points of that, um, one that we did with the city, just so you have some idea, we identified a point of contact for the city and a point of contact um for uh Places to Age on that contact. Um, we asked for the city for assistance in identifying grants that we might apply for. We'll do all the work. We'll do all the reporting, but to know about a grant, to find those grants, because sometimes, you know, municipalities know about things that we don't know about, and that's going to be very helpful for us. Um, it is also in the M A U as an expectation that we will be asking for waivers, fee reductions as we go through this, so everybody knows that upfront, and when the time is appropriate, then we will go before the city council, but everyone knows that that's going to happen. We've also asked again for flexibility in timing, flexibility in paying for things, flexibility in getting things completed that the code requires. Um, we're going to do everything we're supposed to do. We're going to do everything we're supposed to do, but we not, might not be quite where we should be in our timing on that. And they have agreed to be flexible and working with us on that. The other thing we had to work through with the city of Salida is their inclusionary housing code. And in the process of doing this, I mean, things were pretty straightforward for employee housing and the independent living units, but not at all for the assisted living. In the process of working on the MMU, we found out that someone, when this was done, was smart enough to fit, to actually put into this that nursing homes, et cetera, are not included. And so that solved that problem, saved us, and we all know that now, and we didn't when we started this. The other thing is the annexation. We are zoned R2, or excuse me, R3, because we need that for our buildings. But that whole 40-some acres was annexed as one group, and now we'll be moving into the subdivision. Ours will stay R3, but some of these other subdivision areas may end up going through the evaluation process and becoming R2. And so zoning will be reviewed, you know, before building permits are, are issued. So next, I'd like to kind of go through the partnerships that we are in the process of forming. I've already mentioned CCCF. And of course, Public Health has been very supportive and, and the Age Strong Coalition in particular helped us get started. As we have talked with other nonprofits or hospital boards that have done something similar across the country, it is very apparent to us that, you know, it's great to have all these partners, but if we don't have the hospital and local governments behind us, there's no way we're going to be able to get through this. Those are the key partners for us. And so we are also in discussion with the hospital. Bob Morosco has been great. He has sat with us in some of the conversations that we have had with operators. Really, he has great knowledge in that area and has shared that with us. Of course, Chaffee Housing Trusting, Chaffee Housing Authority will be critical for us, especially as we look at the independent housing units and the employee housing units. CMC is also going to be important to us. One of the incentives we would like to give to our employees is that they are enrolled during the time that they are working for us in some sort of CMC health career program. We also think that's going to help CMC strengthen their health career offerings, because we'll probably have, I don't know, with a final build-out, a minimum of 40 employees. And so we think it's going to be a great partnership and a great advantage to both of them. We're also working with the UAA COG specifically to see if our project qualifies as an enterprise project, in which case we can give very nice tax credits to people who donate to us. And then, of course, like I said, the local governments are critical. I'm going to give you a little bit of, of data here, a little bit of statistics on why this project is so important. These first two items here come from the 2020 census, so they're, they're getting a little old. But at that point, 27% of the county was 65 and over, with a prediction that that's going to be 33% by 2030. But we just got some data from the UAA COG this week that said the 60 and over in the county is 33% right now. So this is all growing faster than what we thought it was going to be. In 2021, there was a senior survey done by Public Health showing that this was one of the top needs. We don't have anything here. Not only do we not have assisted living or independent living or memory care, we don't even have a company that you can hire that provides home healthcare. We don't even have that. So people that want to sit here and be in their homes and pay for it, they can't even do that. And I think you all know, we kind of mentioned the previous attempts. So we are very committed to trying to provide for all income levels access to the facilities that we put in. Now, there may be, you know, some assisted living or independent on the other land that isn't. There could be some luxury ones or whatever, but we are going to try and do that. And we just got some data on this, and I think it's very interesting. Because for those people in our county with incomes less than 30K each year, which are probably going to be mostly Medicaid people. Countywide, there are 20.5% of those people. And if we looked at 65 and over, 22.9% are in that category. And then when we look at middle income from 30K to 50K, countywide, 18.9% of our residents fall into that. And for 65 and over, 17.6%. And then those making over 50K per year, countywide, they're 60.6%. And for 65 and over, 59.5%. So you can see that our senior population is very, very close to our overall population in terms of those economic groups. They're, they're very much together there. Benefits. And we were kind of looking at these as benefits to local government. Certainly, there will be tax benefits. And for Salida, we're bringing in new land for development that's in that three-mile range around the city. Another benefit is to keep retiring money in the community. We have so many retirees in this county that bringing in the money is really, keeping their money here is really important. We also think there are, there are personal safety issues. People who stay in their houses too long and are isolated and don't have support in their homes, that's a safety issue. We also think that some people are staying in their homes too long, and it's keeping their house from getting turned over in the housing market, where if they had an alternative to go through, we'd have more houses in our housing market, and that would help everybody. So especially when we're looking at workforce housing. I already mentioned the jobs that this is going to create, and we hopefully more opportunities for careers in healthcare. And then, of course, for the people that would end up moving into these facilities, certainly their sense of place, there's being able to stay with their support systems, a better quality of life for them. So, you know, for us, kind of the, some of the solutions that we're looking for and working for partners have to do with this flexibility of, you know, getting fee waivers, with getting letters of support. BV has already given us some letters of support from some of the grants that we have applied to. And then finally, I wanted to talk just a little bit about what the future looks like and what might happen in BV. If it turns out that we can do these homestyle models, some people even call them pods, and we get that worked out in Salida, so that we have the architectural plans, we have everything set up for them. We are really hoping that we can have a couple of those in the northern part of the county, up here in BV. And we wouldn't need as big an acre, or maybe we only need two or three acres, and we could put one or two of those pods on here. And I think the other thing that's happening up here is that the whole medical support system is growing, and now you have a lot of clinic here. You're getting to have a lot more medical services here than when I moved here 20 years ago. And that also makes it more feasible to have this kind of a center up here. And so I think one of the requests that we have for you is that we would like you to keep an eye out for land possibilities. It might work for us up here to have some sort of small kind of senior living, assisted living, you know, at least an assisted living, you know, let's, let's say that much to start with. We're also would like to ask you to keep an eye out for grant opportunities for us to do that. You all are doing a fantastic job with affordable housing up here. I am so impressed with what you are doing. And I'm thinking maybe there might be some possibilities for some cooperation in some kind of an employee housing venture or something like that with some of the plans that you have happening in the future. And we also would certainly like to hear any ideas that you have for how we might work together as partners. If we did get some land up here, we would want to do an MOU with, with the Board of Trustees, you know, at the time that we would start work on an actual project up here. So, so did you have anything to add?
No, I think you've covered it, yeah.
So any questions that you have, any suggestions, comments?
Yeah. I mean, great presentation, and congrats on, on the process that you've made and being your own nonprofit. And it seems like it's an amazing progress from, I think, the first time I had a conversation, I think it was with the originally. And so, but I'm excited for you, and sure, the best luck in any way. I can personally help out, I would like to, and I can't obviously speak for the board in that sense, but I'd hope there could be something we can do, and we'll keep our eyes out, so. Very nice.
Thank you very much, yeah.
I think it's particularly important to keep the older population here because of their philanthropy. They're supporting all the nonprofit organizations and the churches and, and the governments and, not only with their money, but with their time. So I would hate to, you know, continue to lose those people.
Second, thanks for all the work they all are doing on this. It's a big problem with big solutions and stuff like that.
Any other comments, trustees? Questions? Cindy, anything? Oh, she's muted.
I really don't have any questions, but fantastic. I'm just waiting for this to come to fruition because it is important in our valley. And I'm glad to see that there, there's people out there working toward this, yes.
Thank you for all your hard work.
We'll keep in contact with you. We'll try and keep you updated in one form or another as we reach, you know, certain progress points. And thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a business item with Visionary Communications. And this is the successor to Aristata Telecom.
I can just set the plate a little bit, so we got Brian Shepard with us. He came back on May 14th, kind of introduced visionary broadband or communications. Recently acquired Aristata. At that time, he kind of referenced the Redaway Agreement. That if you kind of look at the lineage of it, really goes all the way back to 2006. Ridgway Matrix, McCord Communications were the originators of the agreement back in 2006. Colorado Essential Telecom or CCT kind of updated in 2017. Aristata took over CCT, and now we're at Visionary. Brian was instrumental, as well as Jeff Parker, as far as the redline process to get to an amicable agreement that is included in the package. So we've got Brian here to kind of provide any updates or field any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. And, you know, really the agreement, what this does is just set the guidelines for how we do business with the city, the town, I should say, during the installation process. Sets things like minimum insurance requirements, what happens if you guys need us to move something, what does the inspection process look like? You know, make sure that, you know, you'll treat someone else the same way you treat us and so forth. So we still have to come in and apply for permits for each construction project. So you will have the opportunity to review all of the actual permits and make sure that we're, we're meeting code and your guidelines and everything. This just provides the overarching agreement. We're really excited to do this. So we just completed our, the similar agreement with Salida last week. And this will really pave the way for our construction. We did just sign the agreement with the state for our capital projects fund, a project that will come up kind of west side of 285 Main Street up through town. And we are analyzing the beat opportunity with the state. And so we will, we expect to have other grant funds flowing to the valley. And so we, this is good timing. We are hoping to start the CPF project sometime this year. And we just were working on getting the, the kind of a notice from the state that we can proceed with, with actual activities on that. So that's really what we're here to do. The, the, your staff has been fantastic to work with. Process has been very smooth, and I think both the town and us are very happy with the document. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have on the document or anything else relating to our broadband efforts.
Is it possible for you to summarize what's involved in, in putting in your system?
So, so within the town limits, basically, it'll be, there'll be two methods. One, we'll be working with Sangre de Cristo on any aerial. We do have a joint use agreement. So essentially, in that situation, we would work with Sangre de Cristo and work with the town to make sure that everything is complies with code and so forth. And we use their rights of way and essentially hang fiber on the telephone, or the, the power poles to do that. And then what will be, what would be a bulk in the town would be underground, what we call boring. So for example, if we were to say, we are, we are going to put fiber from here all the way down to 285, or, you know, actually, yeah, 285 or 24. What we would do is submit some engineering drawings. So we would say, we're going to go on the north side of Main Street or the south side of Main Street. We're going to do directional boring, which is where you go down in the ground, and we're going to go 18 inches below the surface. Here's where we're going to cross the streets. Here's how we're going to cross the streets. Here's the utilities that we have found in the ground, water, sewer. Here's how we're going to get around them. And so we would provide complete engineering drawings of where our local, our infrastructure is going to go from point A to point B. And then we submit those drawings and that, and those to this, to the town for a permit, a construction permit. You guys then take those drawings and go through and make sure that everything fits to your code. We're at the right depth, we're at the right offset from the road, from the sidewalk, however it is. We've located properly all the utilities. Everything meets standard, standard town code. You would then issue us a permit and say, yes, you can do this. Usually, as part of that, there's traffic control. So if we have to shut down an intersection one day, we would put a plan in for how we would do that. Again, all those costs are on us. How would we wrap traffic if we needed to, or flaggers or anything like that across each major intersection? So we have a basically complete plan of what the construction looks like and how long it will take. We submit those plans to you, and then you approve them. Once we receive the approved permit, then, then we will move forth in the timeline that the permit allows us to.
So when you cross a street, does that mean that you cut the pavement?
No, usually we go under. So that, that, that's, so the good thing about directional boring is you go under. So the machines go down. Usually, you go anywhere from 18 to 24 inches below. Again, depending on what utilities you might, you know, sometimes you have to go a little bit deeper if there's utility, other utilities there. So we, we would cross underneath the streets. Occasionally, we do, it, it may not make sense. So, okay, if we did have to do that, that would be in the plans where we would have to actually cut the road and then show it, show you how we're going to fix the road and repave the road. But like I said, in, in towns such as Buena Vista and others, we prefer to go directional boring because the remediation work, you know, if you have to cut the road open, it's almost, it's more expensive than just, you know, boring and going underneath the road, and is much less hassle for everybody.
Does it protect the trees? You know, as you're going along, are you cautious about the roots of the trees or?
Yeah, usually the, the foliage isn't a thing of an issue because we're really close to the road. So in that situation, that would be part of what the town would look at. So if, if there was a, a group of trees right along that path where we were going, that's where, when we issued the permit, the town would then come back and say, hey, you know, we're concerned about this grove of trees. We'd like you to go deeper on, on the board, to go, you know, maybe three feet down to make sure you don't disturb the roots. Or can you, you know, jog around the trees a little bit? Or, you know, could you go up the street and over and around? You know, so those types of things, those details are what we work with the town staff when we actually submit the plans for the permit.
Thank you. I just have a brief question. So when you are putting in the utility or the infrastructure, whatever, with open With open ditch, is there ever opportunity if somebody else would need to put something in as well in the utility? Is that possible to? I don't know if that helps share cost or things like that. I don't even know if it's. If they can be that close depending, but if the grounds opened up for one reason, sometimes it seems like it might be nice. For everybody to jump in it if they, they need to versus multiple times. I don't know if that's possible, but just curious if that's.
Yeah, so when, if we do an open trench, absolutely. And, and again, that's part of the, the town. So if we were saying, we're going to open trench this section of the road. Uh, and open it up, yeah, you know, a lot of times towns and cities will say, hey, you know what? We've been meaning to bury this there. Or we need to fix our sewer line or our water line that's in here, you know, let's do that. We work, we, we work on sharing the costs. And when we directionally bore, usually that's difficult to share because it's just, you know, you really, you're literally creating like a small tube. That you run the conduit in. Um, now that said, if the town, for example, wanted their own fiber. Uh, we can put what's called micro ducts within that tube. So we could say, okay, town, we're going to give you kind of your own little, uh, micro duct in that tube. So that if you ever wanted to pull your own fiber for that, you guys could do that, uh, within that. So again, we could come to agreements upon that, uh, when the time comes. Uh, and then, yes, like with the utilities, uh, you know, for example, I'm working on something right now in Pagosa Springs. Where Lapada Electric is going to be developing in a new, uh, or building a new development. They're just now putting in the electricity. And so we're going to, for their economic development folks are putting us in touch with them. So that as Lapada Electric comes in and, you know, puts in the electric, we're just putting in our stuff right next to them. Uh, in a single ditch to make, make it, make it good. So again, we have a good relationship with Sangre de Cristo. Uh, and, you know, our use agreement, you know, basically said, kind of anything they have to do, we have to do as well. So.
Alright, thank you very much.
Other questions? Is there, uh. A motion to, uh, approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number sixty-one, series twenty-two-four. A second.
Okay, so we have the Crezzi and Hike. Okay, um, all in favor or is there, is there a further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated? Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity. We are excited about, uh, the future for broadband here, uh, down in the whole valley. So.
Thank you. And now we'll go to the next item, uh, which is a continuance of a public hearing. From July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Um, I'd like to reopen the hearing. And, uh, this has to do with temporary seasonal camping, um, in the highway commercial zone district. Uh, we will be considering an ordinance, number fourteen, series twenty-two-four. So Joel, is this your?
Yes. Thank you very much. Um, it's not a very, very long presentation this evening. This is a continued, uh, hearing from. The twenty-third of July, which was forwarded from the Planning Zone Commission, uh, seventeenth of July and we. You know, as we know, we started this process, um. Sometime before the planning department turned over and we took it up again in, uh, April of this year. Um, working with Planning Zone Commission on a few different ideas and aspects and picking up. Where there weren't really notes. Uh, and so we've. You know, we were working planning zoning and then you all, um, to kind of. Come forward this evening. So I have in your packet, there is, uh, description of all the changes. Uh, outlined in green and I've got a little, uh, presentation here that I'll, that I'll walk through and open up then to. Of course, public comment and then, uh, discussion. So why are we doing this again? Just, um, real quick. One, we talked about the need to better regulate camping in the industrial, light industrial zone district. Where it already exists, but there were some big concerns with the planning zone commission, code enforcement, fire in particular and. Um, we also want to open this up. There have been some requests for allowing this in highway commercial. Camping as well. So how do we accommodate that? Um, and this, of course, is following up from a directive from the board, um, prior to. That last election, but today we want to visit this as well as the planning zone commission from twenty-two-three. Um, so it's supposed to, so the specific changes since last time. So we had the, um. And these were all coming from you all and Jeff Parker, um, and I worked on the language that is. You know, just proposed at this point. So when we changed that, talking about vested rights to, there is, quote, no intent for vesting. And to there is no vested right. So we changed that language. I think it was yours, trustee, right? Um, we added an allowance for employees and their immediate family and. You know, created some sort of a definition within that, uh, description, I should say. We added a description of living and sleeping structures in there. Um, we added a co-reference specific to screening. There were some question, what does screening mean? So rather than redefine or. Um, we just referenced the existing description of screening. Uh, we specifically added public health in there for referral agency. For this would be, of course, the initial site plan review. And then we also added. Uh, the setback of fifteen feet from neighboring properties. We added language to discern a limit to the density, uh, which would be reviewed during site plan review. Uh, we added a statement that the administrator may consult with other departments and or agencies for permitting and renewal. This comes from that. Desire to have, hey, you're doing a renewal. Well, let's get all the feedback. And so this is that avenue and opportunity if there was a. Uh, a need or desire from, for, during the administrative review to have that. And then we, of course, added a definition of camping. Um, so we changed the title. You'll see we added another section that we changed. Seven point seven point two, because we added a definition of camping. Rather than doing it within this part of the code, it's better to do it within the actual definition section of the code. So. Those are the changes. So, um, again, we'll. After a public comment, close the hearing, deliberate the changes and then we'd look for a. Motion to approve, approve with additional amendments, continue the hearing to date certain, um, or. Indefinitely and then, or deny. Any questions?
I'd like to open this for public comment. Brian, is there anybody online? Who would like to speak?
Uh, nobody has their hand raised.
Okay, um, so no one who's online would like to speak. Is there anybody present with us here who would like to speak?
No.
Okay, okay, then I'll close public comment. So trustees, do you have questions for, um, Joel or for Jeff? Um, about the, about the changes that were proposing here and the resolution as stated?
My only question is what the current definition of screening actually says. I, I don't need the exact words, but like what-ish it says.
I've got it right here. I, I was waiting for that question. So. I'm, I, it's basically, um, I'll read it to you because it's right in front of me here. It's got, uh, A through F about screening standards. What it says is screening shall consist of durable, low maintenance materials that effectively block the visual observation. And this is, this is with respect to storage, but we're talking about camping. So it's going to say storage because you're referring to storage, but. Because we're using the same standards, it's camping. So it says, uh, effective. Which effectively block the visual observation of the stored materials. That would be camping because we're dealing with that. When viewed at a height of six feet above finished or natural grade. From public walkways or streets adjacent to the storage area. Again, it's going to be the camping area. And then screen make assist of fencing walls or other structures. All screening shall be maintained in good and effective condition. Chain link fencing with or without added material, screening or slats is prohibited. We've had a long conversation about whether chain link fencing is appropriate. If you put slats in it and the board in the past has said no. Um, there's three more sections. I'll read quickly. It says, um. No stored material shall exceed the height of the screening. So what that would mean is none of the camping. Um, equipment or facility should exceed the height of the screening. And it says, um, wood fences used for screening shall be made of natural pressure, pressure treated or manufactured recycled wood. Of sufficient quality and durability to withstand prolonged exposure to the weather. So. Ten of that is just to have good quality fencing, not just junky wood. And then the last section says the town administrator may approve alternative screening materials and or methods upon written application. All alternative screening shall effectively serve and satisfy the intent and purposes of this section. So that, that's it.
With a piece about the administrator can approve alternatives. I think that is fair given the RVs. I don't think you'd want a screen have to be taller than an RV. Yeah. Um, so that's what I was concerned about, but. I think the variance allowances. Fine. So I support the ordinance as amended or written by staff this time around. So, okay, thank you. Uh, who else?
Question for, for Jeff on page one oh three. Second line down purpose where we say specify the need for the approval of public health. And sixteen, three, four, two, C, four, G. The referral agencies are planning and zoning commission requires approval from fire department sanitation district, public health and public works. This is a super nitty bitty question. Do those entities need to be directly named? Or is it okay to have this generic referral to the fire department and not like Chaffey Fire Protection District and. Buena Vista Sanitation District, Chaffey County Public Health and Town of BV Public Works. Is this efficient? Is this efficient to have these called out generically? Or would someone have an extra grant and say, well, you didn't define who public health is and so?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it could go away frankly. I mean, I think that ultimately nobody's going to be able to say that, oh, it doesn't apply. I mean. There's only certain, there's only one public health with jurisdiction in the town. There's only one fire department with jurisdiction, only one sanitation district with jurisdiction. And only one public works department with jurisdiction. So, um, I think it's fine, but I mean. Happy to put the names in if you think.
Just the question, if it's more generic, then there's probably more. If someone wants to make an issue of it, more, uh. Attention, you have to get it later. I'm fine with, I'm fine with how it's written. I was just asking.
There, there is no liability. I'm not really that concerned, but I mean, like I said, it's a good point. No problem putting in the names if, if, if people want to do that. That's.
Are there any trustees who feel that, that it should be more specific?
I don't, I don't know whether it should. This is my question.
I know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, clarification, I'm good. Yeah. Since there's only one authorized in the jurisdiction.
Okay, just leave it alone.
Part of the reason we, we did list them is that, so they have to do these because there are instances, you know, in the con where it's kind of a. Administrative decision whether or not you have, have to ask like, um, visionary communications.
Yeah.
As, do we ask them as a referral agency or not? And if we. So there's a, a discretion depending on the project. So let's, we, we list them specifically. So it has to be.
And for the, the, the rule, this is a preclude input from law enforcement. I just want to say, hey, thanks for making the changes. They, uh, hit the nail on the head in my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, the changes are really phenomenal.
Any other, uh, trustee questions or comments?
I have a couple.
Okay, please go ahead, Cindy.
And, uh, one of my questions is that this is. Supposed to be a temporary fix and hopefully it'll be a temporary problem. Uh, how do we decide when this isn't necessary anymore? And my other thing is, is on page one oh three. Living and sleeping structures must be fully enclosed, weatherproof and of. Suitable quality withstand local weather for the time period during which the permit shall be in effect. Um, I understand that this will be a year round thing. And I just want to ensure that this adequately covers. If you've got someone camping with young children, that the young children are. Warm and properly taken care of because we do have winter conditions where camping isn't ideal.
So they, I think the answer to the first question, uh, is something for the trustees to consider. When is this not needed? Right? So I'll leave that for you guys. But just chime in on the second part. The, I think the, the ideas within the, um, site plan re- review. Um, process, the administration will know the, the desire of doing year round or not. And so. Whether, depending on the season and how long that permit is requested. That is when the evaluation of, hey, you've just got a little tent and you're planning on camping through into November. Well, that's not going to work. And so there'll be that opportunity to, to deny or send back. You know, you have to amend this. So that's where that component would fit. Now they're going to have some spring storms or early, early storms too, and that might. Unless we did just that short time period, April, uh, September or something.
In your application process, the applicant is coming to describe this is who we're trying to house for how long. And so there's a process for. Staff to say, okay, if you're, you know, you're going to have fifteen people here year round plus their family. Yeah, you're going to need more than a tent from R I. Yeah. And if it's, no, no, we just need a summer surge. We're going to have this. We're going to, we're really going to use this like July through August. Different. So I think that's really context specific. Yeah.
I. I have struggled with this for family reasons. Um, I think it would be an adventure for college students. I just think that it is. Uh, poor acceptance for families moving to our community. To try and make it here, but I can understand the need for it also. And that's my comment.
Also comments, um, particularly about, um. Determining when this program is no longer needed, um, and how do we handle that?
Yeah, my thought on that one is to kind of see how many businesses are requesting it. Uh, and what the use is like on it and to do, much like we do with a lot of things, kind of the annual review check in with. Ryan, hey, how's it going? Has it been successful? Have we had any issues with it? What's the big desire? I, I also, because it's intended for temporary use for the employer. And to get people here and situated and hopefully over the next two years, our housing situation changes drastically. Kind of makes me think, what's the harm of leaving it in? Uh, if it's not being used, but we know it's there for fail safe if we need it. So because of the updates to the document. And the fact that it's all going through town administration, I would almost feel comfortable just leaving it there. And, and having that as a benefit of being an employer in BV is if you're a highway commercial or I one, your access. You, you have access to do these things. So it's kind of my gut, gut reaction on it.
I agree. I don't see the harm in, you know, and we don't know what the future will bring. So I don't see why we'd. Put a end date on it or any speculation of what that is. I feel like we just have to see how it's used, do the check in and just. The board will determine that, I think, at a future time.
Okay. Donovan, have anything?
Yeah, I think if it gets to a point where every single business on having commercial has a little. RV park, then maybe that would be a trigger, but I think if it's just one or two, you're there. Really feel like there should be an end date specifically. But I wouldn't be opposed to one either.
And companies are having to apply for this.
Right.
Annually, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably. Taking back on some of Phil's discussion earlier, there's, there will be a fee for the initial. Review effort. And then the. Annual renewal fee would be quite a bit less because there's less effort. That's not our purview to evaluate that fee, but that's something. Once this is in place, then you guys evaluate the staff resources required for the initial and.
Correct.
It seems like if it's a, if something that's. Being abused, the future board could always look at modifying or repealing.
Is this, is there a similar Ivan? Looked at this specifically, but in the light industrial, do we have a similar process or no?
This, this process would be, right now there isn't. This would be applied to that light industrial right now.
Okay, yeah. So everybody's playing on the same world.
So it's highway commercial and.
Yeah, because it would.
Yeah.
Applied it temporarily. Think it sets up some good guardrails.
Okay. Is there, are there further questions or comments, discussion?
We heard from. The businesses in light industrial about this. Do they have any comments or? Anything?
We haven't. Haven't discussed, I mean, just through the public process of the coaching. But in the future, they'll have to apply. So we'll have to reach out to them.
How many do we have right now that are two?
Yeah, that's what I know.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty four.
Second. Rosenhour and. Lucrezzi, right?
That's it.
Right? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Great.
Thank you for the changes that were made.
Yeah, I was really.
Yeah, thank, thanks for your input on that. Good direction.
Great, okay, trustee staff interaction. Maggie, would you like to start?
Nothing big. Yeah, just winding up to summer. I did have a really great follow up conversation with Janet. And he was having some raised issues from music at the park. And we had a great conversation and then. Going to continue to work together moving forward to make sure that everybody's happiest, happiest can be.
Thank you for handling that.
Of course.
Okay, Gina.
I don't think I actually have anything.
All right, okay.
I'm good.
Okay. I'd like to say that we've been asked for a letter of support from the public library. For their additions and programming changes that they're making. And. We need board approval for me to sign that letter.
I'll make a motion to have you sign that letter. Support.
Good, thank you. On page one seventeen of your packet. Okay, we have Ro and Rosenhour, right?
Yeah, I can have it.
Oh, okay, so we have Ro and Hike, Ro and Hike. Sounds like a party. All in favor of the mayor signing the letter? Anyone oppose?
Title of this town.
Okay, the motion passes outside the letter. I got a call from one of the geothermal people today. And I've put him through to Brian. He's, he's working on. Getting, getting through the county processing of a permit. And. We'll just see, see how that goes.
So. And we've got, I'm having this baby on or before September sixteenth, that's three weeks from yesterday. I discussed it with the mayor, discussed it with our town administrator. I'm going to be taking eight weeks off from council. So my last meeting until November will be September tenth, should I not be in active labor. So I'll still be alive hopefully and like reading my email. So text or call me if you need me. Meeting members, I will still be reading my email. I will not be engaged in board meetings unless requested until early November. But I'll be reading the minutes and agendas and stuff, at least maybe after three or four weeks when I can stand. So, but if there's something that comes up. Feel free to text, call, email and say, hey, we want you to log on or hey, we want you to read this. So I can be caught up.
These meetings are riveting. You can watch them at like double speed.
I will not be doing that. But no, but if something is important or contextual or long term.
We got this little thing.
Yeah.
We do it every once in a while. The budget. Will take place during that time period. ClearGov is an amazing tool. Where you can go in there, see the activity, see the comments. Kind of encourage you when you can.
Yeah.
Kind of stay on top of that, but that's kind of the primary thing coming up.
And Brian, maybe you and I can do one or two briefings. Before I come back to make sure I'm caught up, but I should only miss like four meetings.
Great, I hope everything goes very smoothly.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting me through this process. I appreciate that we are a board that. You know, have, can have new parents on it. So, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I don't have kids, but I've got eight grandchildren and twelve great grandchildren.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So I got plenty of little people in my life.
That's amazing. Godspeed.
Andrew.
Actually, two things. I went with Gina to the airport advisory board and. Gina's our liaison and I think being liaison pro tem is kind of cool. So it's pretty, it's definitely pretty neat what they're, you know, just what they do, I think, yeah, are, are continued supportive. Their endeavors to diversify some of the operations out there would be good. Two, I went to. The San Luis Valley C dot T P R meeting this last time. Mark could not go. And had some discussions with our C dot director just about the, the value of. Just BV having a presence there. So I think. It's okay, I'll continue to try to, continue to try to do that. They're going to be setting some priorities for. Updating the regional master plan for projects in the area. So I think it's a good time for us. And Brian, you've got plenty of experience there, so. I said, if showing up. Just showing up is eighty percent of the value, I.
Yep.
I can do that.
Yep. There really is. And then to piggyback on that. That is the location that you have to basically be there to be able to get the priorities identified. To get the projects for our area on that list. You've got to be a player at that table. So you got to attend one and then two. Uh, it's probably a discussion that I'll include. On an agenda coming up. To direct the individual that does it to that meeting and where are they putting their stickers, whether are the priorities for our area. Were successful the last round. So. You know, the last time we talked about it, or twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. What we did is basically have the individual municipalities call out. Here's our top four, top three, top five, whatever it is. Send that to the county. And county has kind of a comprehensive list and it goes to the T P R. And it worked pretty well last time. So start thinking about it and we'll have that discussion later.
And it was, it was helpful for me to understand that some of that really, that targeted planning focus is to what they call on system. Yeah, so that's the state owned roadways and then there's the off system projects. That C dot can play a role in like the Arizona Street Bridge.
Funding wise, yeah.
And so I did brainstorm a few things with them about, you know, how, how that. How or if that project might be. Relooked at. And there are, there are some ideas, so maybe we could talk about that at another meeting. But I, so I've got some relatively modestly optimistic feedback on that that. There may be a way.
So.
Yeah, I've got a, that's a kind of direction feedback from the board on one item. My remember in. I think it was January ordinance number two of this year, we looked at. Parking downtown. You might recall, we, we discussed. There's a provision in the code that says that there's a minimum parking requirement of one and a half feet for every twenty five. Feet of street frontage. And then it talks about that you don't need an extra ADU. And so there's some additional kind of language in there. And we specified the old town lot, the old town plat, that was nineteen oh five, but we didn't say. Like the intention was originally back in the day when the U D C was created, every grid is twenty five foot wide lots. And you have mixed use and you want. Multiple uses and if we enforce the strict parking table four point one, then no one can. You know, few people can do that project. So we do the one and a half spaces. Two spaces fit. It's a shared parking arrangement with the business and, and the apartment. And then we had things like the Carbon Street where we had just by that street frontage, we had a sixty unit apartment. That only required what, like fifteen parking spaces or something for the whole. The whole unit and then everything else is dispersed around the community. So we've got a couple inquiries on. And so we added an ordinance to, the town may require additional parking based on the table four point one, which applies to everything else. We also added a potential for cash and lieu for parking. In other zone districts where if you want. You demonstrate an economic benefit of some form and you can have some. Relief and just pay cash in, cash in. So, so we've had a couple inquiries for, with some, some people who. Either have or are going to acquire multiple town lots. And reconfigure them through subdivision processes, et cetera, side plan review to create some, you know. Pretty good sized building, but closer downtown, that would. Only require, if you use a street frontage, about a third of what. Would be required according to the table. And. And so we're, anyway, looking for some feedback direction. We've been kind of taking, I've been kind of taking the stance of like. Hey, if your old town lots, one, one and a half or twenty five feet, if you're. Doing like a big reconfiguration subdivision, major or minor. That would have a lot of density, then we're going to use the table four point one. But then we have to figure out what cash and the economic benefit could be for that. So. I want to kind of bring that up for you guys to chew on because it's. Some, sometimes it could be a popular stance and sometimes it could be a very unpopular stance when we say. Actually, you're not going to be able to have these three spots you need. The nine spots instead, you know, or, or something along those lines. So. It's a, it's ambiguity in the code that will need to. Fix, I guess, or add some. It's in some language.
The problem you're trying to address is if, if you build a magnet and a lot of people come there and park. And that parking bleeds into the adjacent area and impacts others.
Yeah, let's say, let's say like you're north of. North of East Main Street, for example, like the archway. Let's have the archway and the archway was going to build. It's not. All, all ten lots, it's a different size lot, you know, but if they fronted onto Court Street. That's a potential requirement of. Six parking spaces, let's say, maybe eight depend because of the frontage, but you can. Put in a forty foot tall. Apartment building.
Market rate.
At market rate. That for second home owners and all of a sudden you have. Six parking spaces for.
Forty units.
Forty units.
So then they've got their benefit and the impact is everywhere around there when everyone's fighting for a parking spot and going to fisticuffs.
That's kind of what we're, what we're. Yeah, and, and so if it was all deep restricted. Hey, let's entertain this cash and lieu and try and come up with an agreement. So, something along those lines. So I just want to get kind of a. Either sense of where the board would be or if you want me to, you know, bring back something a little more detail on this and, and. Get your brains working on this particular.
Is there anything that we need to involve planning and zoning?
It would involve, i- if we had to change the code, this would, this is in chapter sixteen, so it would involve that, yeah. But this is the first step.
Yeah, well, to me, it doesn't sound like we would. Want to go for the lesser parking. Somewhere, you know, maybe somewhere in between, but. You know, six, six spaces for forty units would be unforgivable, really.
Yeah, but it's, it's possible, except for that sentence. It says town may require additional according to four point one, but we need to.
Yes, I think it'd be helpful to see something a little more.
Town show.
Written up.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. This case feels kind of heavy and following, but at the same time, like. Write it up a little bit. That would help me understand a little bit better instead of giving you a, yeah, go for it or maybe not.
Well, that's, and that's the kind of direction I'm, I'm looking for. It's just like, yeah, this seems worthy enough. To back and, and work with like planning zone first and then we'll bring it back to you guys.
Parking is only going to become more and more.
Already has, it is.
Okay.
And, and no one has applied for anything, but there's been inquiries.
I've noticed in the lot, you know. Behind House Rock, people were double parking employees in a lot, which is becoming a huge issue, which I'd never seen before. Till this year. People just, really just parking wherever they want, but.
Just straight up on the street yesterday.
Yeah, well, I'll look at bringing, I'll start the process with planning zoning. We'll get our head together and, and try and come up with some.
Yeah, I'll be getting a think through what the wording could be.
Other thing, cop plan, we have a second. Steering committee meeting next week. So things are moving along. It's in this phase of gathering data and writing reports and there's some things that. That we can view, look at it, statistics and so. And I think the following up with that steel drive. Crossing, we have. Mike's put together the application to. Create that crossing, you know, so things are in process with that.
That's all I, thank you. I was, I was just thinking about the question earlier about when does the board know when to come back on a topic? And we were involved with writing or. Adopting the parking code. Now it's time to revisit. So, yeah. Sometimes when you know, you know.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
The, the you then can see future board now, huh?
Budget's moving along pretty well at a staff level, so. I'll be reaching out to you all to talk a little bit about ClearGov if you want to have a, you know, a quick. Overview of that tool here in the next few weeks. If not, I, I will have a, a write up on how to access the tool and basics on how to, how to use it. So. That's coming up. Yeah, I'll have the work session on the budget end of September, right? So.
And we can't break it, right? That ClearGov.
You can't break it.
Okay.
No, it's Brian can.
He has the ability to go delete.
That's all.
Thank you. Ian?
Most of the milestones were identified in the staff report. There's one thing I did want to bring up in there. Kind of a conceptual thing. Andrew brought it up originally in late last year. I mean, I've talked about it. Kind of a concept of kind of a staff appreciation breakfast, basically the concept. Not like a mandatory thing or something where it's an event after hours where you got to come and radio speeches. It's just basically. It's you guys and we'll. get you guys and we'll line you out with easy stuff like pancakes and sausages cooked back here. Tell staff to come over on the clock, have some breakfast on us. We'll be available to just have some conversation and stuff like that. Trying to hit that sweet, sweet spot kind of after Angry August. And before holiday season really kicks off, ten will believe we've kind of penciled in for October second. As long as you guys are good on that kind of general concept, I think it would be a cool thing to continue down, so.
I think it's an awesome idea.
Very cute.
Yeah.
That day, uh, the second is also one of the community coffees for the chamber.
No, that's the third. That's the first Wednesday. So the second was a Tuesday, wasn't it? Oh, I may even look at their own month. Yeah. I mean, you could do it right after community coffee.
We don't want all the.
Sorry. I'll give John, I'll send that out there as we kind of find.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great idea.
But it's an awesome idea.
Yeah, cute.
Yeah, good. Another thing related to that is we were talking about whether at the community dinner, whether we should have a table for the town, like for all of us, or if it's better for us to be spread around. And Brian and I thought it was better to spread us around.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that? You won't be there.
Well, it's the day of my C-section, but I like, I like that with my friends. I, I love you people too.
I'd like to say that now anyway.
Okay, Cindy, we'll spread ourselves around.
Don't worry Cindy.
Yeah. Cindy, please, Cindy.
Hi there. Quick, quick comment. School has started and I know that our police force is tapped, but for the first month or two of school, I'd like to see those crosswalks and the speed limit enforced on the highway. And for the safety of the children in our community, yeah. And the routes to, the preferred routes to school patrolled better. And I know that it is a staffing issue, but I think that kind of nips something in the bud. This will not be tolerated and we've had the crosswalks there for years. People know they're there and they need to pay attention or they need to stop driving.
Why it's got a cold?
I'm sorry. He's, he was sleeping pretty good for a while.
He's my favorite.
Yeah, he's a vendor.
He's pushy. But anyway, that was my comment.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything?
No, nope. Smooth sailing. Doing a little bit of work with Joel over the last week or two. We got some more things to work on, but it was nice seeing you all in person last meeting. I appreciated this chance to come up and happy to do it anytime you'd like to see me in person, so. Other than when you have a blizzard, you know, we're trying to avoid the blizzard days if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, I don't have such a, I had a couple of nice vacations and I talked to Jeff on one of them.
Sorry, I was the one that called you. I, I didn't realize I was bothering you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. So let's see, I think for on item eleven.
Make motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, so yeah, Ro and Rice.
Aye.
All in favor?
Really?
So I'm actually really appreciating the length of these meetings, Brian. Thank you for being out about the agenda. Good job as Paula and Mike.
Thank you.
Have a good night, yes.
Good job, Brian.
I know.
Job's now moving.
Went to what?
Feel worse than I do.
Oh, yeah.